To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Board and committee reports. Mr. Larry Gay, are you here?
Yes.
Are you ready?
Yes.
Larry Gay is chairman of the capital planning committee, and is this the annual report?
No, this is an update prior to the-
Okay, good. Yeah, where do we get our annual report for sure?
Prior to, I think when we set the agenda for the Congress meeting.
All right, and I think we have a meeting, joint meeting, too?
Correct, yes.
All right.
Thank you, son.
Thanks, Larry.
All right, kick me around.
All right.
I have requested that capital planning come before the board of selection and give you an interim update of what has transpired with our activities and where we stand with the projects to date. First and foremost, as you know, capital planning has been a committee formed by a vote of town meeting in which we look at all capital expenditures that have in excess of $25,000 in capital purchases and a useful life of five-plus years. Our formula is for you to understand is that by October, we request that any capital requests are made to capital planning, and then each of these requests are essentially looked at in detail, where presentations have taken place justifying the capital expense to us. The committee gets together and kind of prioritizes by means of a vote predicated upon the value, useful life, need, and also potential future impact on town government, so that if some new project is initiated, not only is the capital looked at, but also the operating costs. So I wanted to go down the list for you, kind of give you and let you have a look at it, ask us any questions that you may have relative to what we are considering to date. The first request is called turnout gear for the fire department. This is an expense of $36,000, and this is the third year of our expense in this particular category. We have provided turnout gear to both fire departments, and we are prioritizing this for our last $36,000 payment. A request was made by the fire chief to have the town provide this turnout gear, and the meeting decided, the committee decided, to phase over a three-year period of time, which is what we've been doing. The next item on the end of the list essentially is the public safety town hall facility, which is essentially the request by the municipal planning committee to request a capital expenditure for the initial design phase of the town hall police department construction. This is going to be approximately $526,000. That has been, is going to be requested of the town. This was approved by the committee on the 15th of January, and its funding source will be looked at as a debt exclusion override. So you understand, and not only are these particular capital requests in order, we also have to decide how are you going to fund them, if at all. But this one will be done by a debt exclusion override, and the sequence of that will probably occur in the fall, I believe, at this point in time.
Is that a single year or multi-year?
Well, the town hall construction, this is just for the design phase. This is a one-time request. It's a percentage of the total, around nine, 10% of the total has been requested for the actual design, construction details, so they can go out and forbid on the project itself. We approved that in the 15th, and again, we consider one of our high priorities, of course. The next one on the list is the town hall sewer connection. This is a request from the facilities town hall. The estimated cost is $750,000. This is on the agenda because our septic system is in Title V failure, as you know. We voted to approve it and deemed to be from the sale of land use funds will be the funding source for this particular activity. The next item on the list and requested this year was a cruiser replacement by the police department. This is a scheduled replacement of our cruiser fleet, and it's priced at $35,900. And again, we approved it as well. We questioned in detail the value of the existing cruisers and whether or not we could extend it one more year bypassing it this year, but the case was made very strongly that this was a need that they have. They're up against it with the mileage on the one particular cruiser they're considering on replacing. Police department also has asked for an emergency ATV vehicle to replace an existing vehicle that's presently in service that has had a useful life of 15-plus years. This is what they're using to go into the woods and on the beach and also to rescue people, and they feel that this one has served them well, but it's about time that it needs to be replaced. Again, a strong case was made for it. It was approved by the committee, and we feel that it's a prior need, and it should come out of a stabilization fund for that particular purchase. The next item on the agenda is the boat ramp replacement at the Parker River, and this was by the police department harbor master. It's a replacement improvement of that particular boat ramp that is there by some removal of the existing boat ramp, which is a hot-top based structure, and also replacing with a more appropriate ramp system so that the boaters can get in and out of the river adequately without having a problem at low tide.
Larry, they have a revolving fund.
Correct. They do have a revolving fund. We did not get into essentially asking them to fund it. The revolving fund they do have, but we didn't pursue that it should come out of that revolving fund. We could do it. We don't know what this, where they sit in the revolving fund amount right now.
Oh, okay.
But that's the case. We felt that this, so it'll be properly understood, we felt that the town has a tremendous amount of people that are in the climbing industry. They do a lot of boats in and out of the river, and we feel it's in our best interest to do that. We've not done it for a significant period of time, and so we think it's a very valid request.
Larry, for a person that uses the river a lot, which is myself, it's not a need that's not needed. It's getting kind of bad down there, so.
Correct. I've heard people say, you know, they have hard times pulling their boats out if the wheels get over. And then also, we've taken out the hot-top, which is the, and replacing with something more energy appropriate, I mean, energy efficient from the idea of corrosion and things like that, and it should be the wise thing to do for us in that case.
Steve, can you wait till the end?
I'm just going to ask, so we're talking like pre-stress concrete or something?
Free cash concrete, yep.
Yep, that's what's going to, and we figured the price is $25,000. We didn't think it was an exorbitant request, and we feel it should come out of the stabilization fund. The next item requested this year by capital planning was the council on aging van. By the council on aging, it's a $58,500 replacement. We had a difficult time with this on the cost structure. We looked at asking them to come up with alternatives and things of that nature, but we ran into a little bit of state regulation because the van must have an operational chair lift associated with it, and that's realistically going to drive the cost of 58.5, and that's realistically where we stand. So I think it's a need we need to have. A lot of people do depend upon it for services. The town does use it considerably. The amount of money was a little bit outstanding, but we're locked in because it's a state requirement for that.
And we can't take the lift gate from the old van?
No. That's the one.
Marty Jo also did write a grant, and we're, you know, we've got our fingers crossed. We're hoping to hear back from them, and that would decrease the cost considerably, more than 50%.
The next item on our request was the Manta Field House by the recreation committee. This was a, for the finishing out of the construction of the Manta Field House at $200,000 request. And we have, we're still pending on that particular request, and we're deciding what we should do, whether it's the highest priority or not. We did vote them all, and this one did not hit the high priority level of some of the others so far, but it all depends on where the particular town is fiscally. So that's kind of standing out there. The next item on the agenda for us to discuss this year was the Triton Stadium project. As you know, Triton is looking to replace its field with a turf field in a significant construction activity in the excess of $3-plus million for the project. We recognize they did not have to come to Newbury Capital Planning. We don't own the facility technically, and therefore, we're not in a position to tell them what they should spend on their capital request. They did come forward. We did quiz them significantly on what was it about, and right now, we've had meetings with them, the town has, as to figuring out how we're going to fund this and over what period of time. It looks like it's going to be an 80,000-plus-year cost to the town for 20 years. That's what we're looking at approximately for that particular item. Recently, last February, we did get a request from additional voting machines for the town, from the town clerk, at a cost of $13,000. This was a little bit late request to us, so we're still pending approval by the committee. The next item for your consideration was the Newbury Elementary Playground improvements. Friends of the Newbury Elementary have come forward with a proposal to improve and enhance the playground facilities next to the Newbury Elementary School. Since the town owns the building and the property, the land associated with it, we told them they have to come before us because it's an asset that we control because of our ownership of it, which they did. They proceeded to make a nice presentation of what they're trying to do, and they're trying to raise all the funds by themselves for this project. Roughly is around $150,000 anticipated cost for this project. I put it on the list because I think that if they do fall short of their amount of money they think they can raise, we'll be probably going to be reconsidering this once again before FY '16. It's not a vote necessarily for consideration.
All right.
Therefore, we have totaled the request this year at approximately $1.7 million of capital needs. This is the high watermark of the committee so far since our inception, and it is a significant amount of money, and we have to look carefully as to how we're going to go about funding this. As you know, what we do is we put items in the town warrant for the vote of the town on approval or disapproval of these projects. So the subsequent approval of these are town meeting-based. I added two additional items for your consideration this evening. One was the animal control officer police department request for a new vehicle. They came to us with emergency situation back in the October-November timeframe, saying the animal control officer was using an expired or an old cruiser. They were using it for the animal control, and it was no longer functional, had broken down. They needed an immediate replacement. Since our sequence of events caused us for meeting, decision, presentation, town vote, it really was outside our preview to respond quickly to this request. So at that time, we deferred this request to the FinCom and asking them to consider it as an emergency request out of their reserve fund capability. As you know, the financial committee has a reserve fund of about $75,000 to $90,000 for activities that are basically outside the norm process. And so they did look at it. Case was made. Vehicle was purchased at $23,000 for the animal control officer, and you may have seen the vehicle around town. It's not a cruiser. We looked at saying could use another vehicle. The case was it doesn't work. There's just too many other subsequent issues associated with that.
And Larry, isn't that basically the description of how the reserve fund should be used?
Yes, it is, you know, but I think that, you know, what we wanted to convey by this is indicating that there are exceptions to the process, and when something comes up that is basically outside capital planning, normal sequence of events, we did take this one to FinCom. They looked at it, made the call to fund it appropriately. And the last one was the Byfield Grange stairs, and this was another request that came in. They were in significant disrepair falling apart. And again, it would have been in our sequence to decide in the spring at town meeting and basically put it off. They needed it done. We sent it over to FinCom again for their consideration, and they did approve that, and that was subsequently done. So we have a list that we have, we feel is very comprehensive. There's a lot of subsequent discussions will have to occur under the funding source columns as to how we're going to pay for these things, but that's the status of the capital requests, FY 2016.
Larry, can I ask you guys, when you go back into thinking about how you're going to pay for Manta Field House?
Mm-hmm.
Where some of that work might not be done all at once, and might be able to have phased construction like other things are done, maybe that we won't have to be thinking of $200,000 in one year that would come up with a total of $1,700, you know, so maybe we can take a project and try to accomplish it in the, at least two or three-year time span, or at least get it going, because it probably isn't a bad, bad way to, you know. If you look at it as a, I can remember when it was $100,000, and it became $200,000, and if you look at it, that, that seems like an awful lot of money, but you certainly can think of it in phased construction.
Correct. The way we, you know, we looked at it, you know, essentially is that it doesn't generate revenue for the town by itself because it does generate revenue, but to the rec committee, there's a certain amount of overhead cost per annum on that to keep it cleaned up, and somebody's got to maintain it, and we kind of thought that they would be out searching for volunteers, which they have done so far, to put the shell up at this point in time. So, but they've made a strong case of what their needs are. This becomes available of funds and whether or not we can afford it, and compared to the other priorities that we're listing on this list this evening, it's not one of our top, but yet again, it has a need as well. And the field is well-maintained, it's well-used. It's one of the better fields on the North Shore for what it does do, and it, you know, they're saying that they have a lot of children and athletes there that need to be housed in case they have an emergency storm that may, you know, happen while they're on the field. That's a place for them to hang up.
All right.
With the $80,000 for the Triton Stadium project, is that including any rental fees that may be assessed, or is that not a factor in?
The last meeting that I attended, the discussion was on the rental, whether or not they should retain it. A proposal was being made from Salisbury that they will try to get the rental fees to be subtracted from the annual cost to the town. We're in negotiations with that. It's at the, at the school committee, communication committee with the three towns. It's discussed. It's our position that the revenue generated by rentals of that facility, which they have a pro forma on, should be used to pay down the debt. They would like to retain that money to improve the fields when it comes due in seven to 14-year cycle, new terrains, other, new carpets. It's our feeling is get the debt paid off ASAP, and looking at a 20-year expenditure for that.
20 years at 80?
20 years, 80.
That comes out a heck of a lot more than the three-and-a-half million there. I'm confused here.
The 20-year note, $80,000 to us, to the town in Newbury?
Yeah. So the whole project's $3.5 million. If each town puts in $80,000, my goodness gracious, am I math wrong here? I mean, you're thinking it's $3.5 million because of contributions from certain individuals and other, and other places?
They will come out, yeah, again, this, this particular, this particular request was, I thought, a very good, a good faith gesture on the thought of Triton because they did not have to come to us, because even though they, they can put it into our assessment as they do for capital expenditure, like building a new building, a school, and things of that nature. So it's going to be, it's going to be, they'll figure out the exact cost. That was my understanding of what they presented to us. They had gone from 70 to 90, so it's all over the park, yet to be defined. One of the elements of the discussion was how are they going to take the annualized cost of this project and parse it out between the three towns?
Yeah.
Originally, they wanted a one-third, one-third, one-third calculation.
Right.
And we objected to that on principle because our contract calls for capital expenditures are predicated on enrollment percentages, and therefore, we wanted them to stick to the enrollment percentage calculation, which means how many students of the total that are sent to Triton come from Newbury. It's about 30%, 31%. So we would pay 31% out of 33, 33%. And as you know, and it was made, it too aware to me, that we don't have a tremendous growth capability for new students coming into the town, where some of the other people in the Triton district could have a lot of growth. So, but they agreed to stick with the existing contract, which is the agreement, that the monies for the project will be parceled out between two to three towns based on enrollment.
All right. Thank you for explaining that. Thank you. Any other questions from the board? JR?
Nope, not right now.
Did you have one?
I just wanted to add that these, these numbers in here are estimates, and each of these would have to be either bid or come off the state bid list. So these are basically our worst-case scenario numbers. They'll be fine-tuned as we get closer to town meeting.
All right.
That's a lot of work.
Can I, Heidi had a hand up first, Jen?
I have a question about the town ramp. Not that I think it doesn't need to be replaced, but why are funds from their revolving account not being taken into consideration?
Because their revolving fund just has enough money in it to fund the personnel and the equipment that they use to operate, much like the Manta Field area. If they had excess funds to do the building, we would ask them to do that, but they only have enough money for the field maintenance, the mowing, and recreational programming, so that's why we haven't asked them today.
And not speaking with the absolute utmost of credibility, but, you know, obviously the way rivers and high currents work, it's probably needed at this time before it gets to be a lot more expensive at some other time, so. Jen?
Can I have a worst-case estimates for the ATV vehicle and for the Byfield Grange stairs?
ATV vehicle was $16,500, and the Byfield Grange stairs was $15,000.
You can get a copy of this, too.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you.
Larry, thanks.
Thanks, Larry.
Public hearings, we do not have any, so, Tracy, we're all set, if you are.
Yep. Just a brief update, the Plum Island sewer system is, or it's been reported that as of late Sunday, the entire sewer system is fully operational. We're obviously very grateful to the, for the patience that the impacted residents have demonstrated throughout the event, and for the coordinated effort that the city was able to orchestrate under the direction of Mayor Holliday. The snow and ice account deficit is exceeding $120,000 as of right now, so that will be on our special town meeting warrant. We hold our special town meeting before the annual town meeting. That will be one of the first issues that we'll have to address, and in all likelihood, we'll be looking for an appropriation from free cash, a transfer for free cash to cover that deficit. I did want to, as you know, deeply engaged in the budget development at this point in time, the, last year, we had established a listing of, of goals that helped me, your goals, that helped me to drive the whole budget development, and I wanted to run through them with you briefly tonight and see if there's anything else you'd like to add that, now that we have some new membership. The significant goals were reinstating public safety funding, fire and police, reinstating human service funding, which was the council on aging.
Shh, Larry.
Identifying and planning for the public safety facility, which is underway, purchasing the new fire department pumper, which was completed, executing a lease agreement for the elementary school building, executing lease agreements and contracts with our two fire companies, updating our capital planning program annually, which Larry just gave you the report, conducting a comprehensive review of the Triton Regional Agreement, providing an inventory of town-owned roads, which is, we're engaged in right now, updating the five-year road improvement program, which will go hand-in-hand with the inventory, updating our master plan and our open space and recreation plan, which is underway, considering regional cooperation, reducing energy consumption, promoting energy conservation, funding our OPEB liability, which each year for the last three years, we've made a contribution, maintaining the solid financial plan, which includes a stabilization funding plan. And although, you know, what Larry has presented tonight obviously is a significant number, we're in a much different position than we have been in many years in that we can entertain these. We have a solid financial plan for the town. We've got a long-term plan, thanks to a lot of people. We, four years ago, we couldn't even talk about doing any of these things, and now we're forecasting into the future. We're addressing capital needs. We're identifying them. We've got a plan for five years out. So, so we've made a tremendous amount of progress, and sometimes we get so caught up into the day-to-day operations that we don't have an opportunity to, to look back and assess what we've been able to accomplish, so. And finally, and probably most importantly, enhancing the communication with residents through increased media committee programming. We've been adding additional boards and committees to the cable access, but we also had a conversation with the finance committee about possibly funding a newsletter that we could do maybe semi-annually to make people more aware of the issues that we're dealing with. So that was kind of what we had on the list, and I didn't know if there was anything specifically that, in addition, you'd like to see added.
They're all great ideas. Anything from us, guys? JR, Damon?
That's off the top of my head.
You know, I'd like to, I don't know if this is the right time or place, but I'd like to make the wording of questions on the ballot more understandable for people. I found that to be an issue when speaking with other folks. I know there's a way legally you have to word things, but I think a lot of people struggle to interpret a lot of these questions, and things go by the wayside because of it. It's real easy to vote no if you don't exactly understand what's going on, and it just sounds like more. That's something I'd like to see, you know, the wording of these questions improved. I mean, it's a pretty basic idea, but I think it would go a long way.
Okay.
I mean, stuff, that's probably a really good idea, JR. I mean, stuff that's within our ability to change, some stuff might come to us that way.
There are restrictions, like, for example, ballot language for overrides. It's very strict, the language, but we, we are including rationales in the booklet, which I think helps a little bit, but maybe there are other opportunities to provide additional information. Yep.
You put the legal ease and then the easy-to-read section. Is that illegal to do on a ballot?
I don't know that you could do that on a ballot. We, we can-
We'll see. Makes good sense. And I mean, it's always, I mean, another perfect example is when we always have to say up to a certain figure, and everyone says, well, that's going to be the figure. But it's really up to that figure that, you know, so, I mean, it's, it's probably, you know, we can-
Do you think there's any way we could use the cable channel to try to explain ballot questions beforehand, or would we run into legal problems?
No, that's, that, that's an opportunity for us.
Really powerful tool. I don't know if everyone's watching it, but I think more people than we think are.
Especially if it started to be an annual event, then people would tune into that.
If we had an informational program prior to a vote.
That's good, JR. That's good. So, I mean, not assigning you this task, but stay on it.
Okay.
Seriously. Because, I mean, I think the idea of the cable is if there were certain questions, obviously going into ballot time, then people are going to take in, you know, whether it's an offshoot of informational, to tell people from the website, to the town website, to go to the cable, I mean, see what ca-, Caleb, is that doable?
Yeah.
Sorry.
The wizard says it's doable, so I think, I think that's good. I really do.
Yeah, I remember a lot of people were confused about the CPA on the ballot.
I found, speaking to my peers, that went over a lot of people's heads. It was viewed as a tax increase.
Well, it's going to be, it's going to be pretty hard, not the question.
I mean, you know, it, in essence, it is, but I think a lot of people missed about the, the types of things that the funding would go for, and that we could later approve the rate, you know, as little as, I think it was a half a percent.
Mm-hmm.
You know, sometimes people won't read, but they might really, using cable might be a vehicle. It's, it might be a really good idea. All right, good. Anything else?
Yep. The finance committee met last week and did give their preliminary approval for a number of overrides that will, in all likelihood, appear on the ballot if the board also wants to see those move forward. The preliminary, again, we're in the preliminary budget development phase, indicated that we would, in all likelihood, need a general override for the Triton assessment. Our numbers came from the state last week, and that may not be the case. So we, we're still waiting to hear from Whittier and Essex to get their numbers. So whether or not we need a general override to fully fund our educational assessments is still in question right now. But in the event that we do, they would recommend to the board that we propose a general override. They were supportive, unanimously supported the debt exclusion override for the Triton Stadium project. They also unanimously supported a general override in the amount of $100,000 for our snow and ice removal account. We have ran a deficit for, for many years in that account, and although the general law will allow- law will allow you to do that, I don't think we should use it as an excuse to not budget appropriately. You know, we increase it incrementally, but this would get us really to where we, we need to be to have an adequately funded snow and ice removal budget. They also supported a debt exclusion override to fund the public safety project design engineering. They would prefer to see that as a, a debt exclusion override. And they, they had also talked about last year when we went to the annual town meeting regarding the fire pumper, they had, we made one initial appropriation for the first year of the lease payment, which was approximately fifty-five thousand dollars. They would like to see a capital outlay expenditure exclusion override to pay off the balance of the fire truck, which is approximately four hundred and twenty thousand dollars. We did, I, I think the board did discuss it briefly, but we, we didn't come to any kind of decision. So those are likely the, the overrides to date that, you know, we can start thinking about when we meet on the thirty-first. That's when you'll, you'll need to vote.
On our new calendars, we, we have a joint finance committee selectments meeting, so it gives you some time to really digest some of the information, and you can ask Tracy any questions you might have right now. Tracy, a non, when the snow and ice budget is not fully spent, the money goes back to...
It closes to free cash. It would close out.
Just, you get asked that question, it always goes back, so.
Yep.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Absolutely.
I would like to add one more to the override. I believe we're gonna have a menu. I'd like one of the questions to be for roads. I talked with the highway surveyor from Groveland. He not only uses the Chapter Ninety money, but he throws one road every year on a one year debt exclusion, paid for that year, and the people voted in. And I thought it was a great idea, and I would like to throw that in the mix, see how everybody feels about it. I've just learned about this, so I just want everybody's opinion. Do you think it's, because of the roads, really need a lot of American, they need money?
I think it sounds, I think it sounds very interesting if, if voters could, you know, specifically vote to improve, you know, a certain road per year in addition, because we definitely need to get caught up, and as the snowbanks melt away, I can only imagine the horrors we're gonna find.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, one thing, too, and I don't know if the synergy is antagonistic, Larry or Tracy, where do we stand on the funding we had to prioritize the roads?
Actually, I, I expect a report this week. The, the funding was approved last year at last annual town meeting, and we engaged Beta, a company called Beta, and I expect to get a report this week, so we're moving forward.
The only thing I caution, too, is when we do all that, that we have some feel for what we're getting back from the dynamics of the prioritization of the roads, so.
Sure.
Other than that, I mean, certainly, we've certainly got the venue to discuss it, so.
Okay.
Thanks, Chuck. Anything else?
Yep.
Tracy?
Yes, Senator Tarr sent us the annual municipal priority reporting form, any special projects that you'd like to see included in the budget. We generally prioritize them and put them on that list for him. The, the only thing that came to mind was the Plum Island emergency access routes, that was something that we had.
Main Street Bridge?
Certainly. Anything else?
Oh, we did Larkin Road Bridge, too, but that's gone. It's not a huge priority, but.
Yeah, yeah.
We've got time, how much time we get to think, too, Tracy?
Before that has to be back in.
Um, was there a deadline on that going, do you know? I don't have the form in front of me. Okay.
Well, I was looking, it's, it's funny, and I was just, I mean, Chuck has dedicated a lot of time to understanding our roads and their needs and bridges, and, and for those that don't know, he's put a lot of time and effort into it. It's an interesting concept. We do have the study that's gonna come our way, and I know Chuck isn't afraid to, to, but we also have a new, James is new, he's probably got certainly some things that he'd like to see done because he knows the real solid structural deficits of, or defects that, that might head to a cataclysmic failure that we might not be totally aware of. So, I mean, he's gonna prioritize his own list, too.
Oh, yeah.
So it seems like we've got, you know, we're gonna have some information this year.
Yep.
So I think it's gonna be good, be kind of nice, and we hopefully get some, some funding.
We need to get a lot done.
The letter states that we should be in touch with them prior to the close of business on March twenty-seventh.
Oh, so we gotta get going.
Yep.
If, if you have anything that's ringing in your ears.
Yep, so if you think of anything, just let me know.
We have a couple of bids on Main Street already, right?
I don't have any bids on Main Street, no.
Did we ever find out along the bridge where it was?
Larkin Road, yes, I have the plans for that, and about ten percent of it is in Georgetown. So we can either have a joint thing or move the bridge a little to the left and have it all in white.
And I mean, it's, it would be nice to really find out one way or the other what we need there. How, Tracy, what's the best way to really go about that? I mean, is that something that we should be looking at in the funding stream?
I believe we have to go to DEP, whether.
But don't we have, didn't, didn't we have someone that was gonna present us, I mean, the engineer was looking at it and everything, didn't he come up with something for us?
We said, yeah.
What's the name of that engineering firm?
We had an engineering firm that was looking at it.
Howard Stein Hudson.
Anything come back yet?
Well, we had a, a proposal to do engineering for the bridge, we haven't actually had the engineering done.
I mean, quick discussion, is that a good thing? Should we be heading in that direction? Should we know what's going on?
We should always know what's going on.
Yeah, it's not a bad idea.
Yeah, I hate to see that road just closed right up.
Yeah.
So it's always good to have an emergency access.
I mean, we might find it's not a huge fix, so.
If we could just do a box and cover it.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you were talking about the Main Street Bridge, you're talking about the Larkin, okay, sorry.
I, I agree, if we could do some type of, ensuring it's large enough, you know, maybe that'll keep us from getting into an overblown engineering scenario here.
There was a quote that was thrown out, it, it wasn't an official quote, somewhere around two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and where it was such a significant amount of money on a not very well-traveled road, we didn't think that it would rise to the list of the priorities, but, you know, we're, we're gonna get the report this week, James will sit down and go over it. If the board wants to repriori, prioritize that as a higher road, then we can certainly do that.
Well, I mean, at least we, yeah, we've talked about it.
At least look into it, right? Yeah, we need to make a decision about it one way or the other, rather than just sort of ignoring it.
Well, why don't, why don't we ask, and, you know, we're on television, too, why don't we ask for some feedback from folks in town? And, you know, we might be understating its use, and people might really miss it. All right, we all set?
Thank you.
No, one other thing, just what Chief, Chief Riley reported, that Paul Thistlewood of Byfield was chosen as the shellfish constable, and he would be starting on March first, so he's started, so he.
Those are big steps, all right.
The Human Resources Board was involved in conducting the interviews, and I think they had the EPOs involved as well, so.
Now, that means he has to step down as commission commissioner.
That was his intention, yep.
Okay.
Yep.
All right.
I mean, one thing, being on the march as much as I am and being involved in a lot of the grant opportunities that are coming our way from a lot of different venues, such as the Sandy Grant, green crab is very invasive, the clam industry touches a lot of people in our area. We really couldn't participate last year when Bruce Tar had a line item for the trapping of green crab. It, it just kinda stalled us up where the other towns that had a clam warden, constable, could slash constable, be able to go forward and enter into that, and it was a pretty substantial line item. I know Paul somewhat, I think he'll do a good job. He comes from a history of the depredation plant, he's worked for, at the depredation plant for a long time, that's the clam plant on Plum Island that cleans the shellfish that could be contaminated, and there's always a push to have that plant closed, it's very much needed for the process it does, so he's a gentleman that's gonna understand some of the idiosyncrasies of clams that certainly we don't, and it probably would be a, he seems like he'd be a good person for the job, and I think it'll be an asset for our town, and it'll end up bringing money in where we would have lost it. Any other comments? Mr. Steelman, congratulations that you are here. Before you head into the meat of your program, either Martha or yourself, who's ever prepared, can you give us a little history, 'cause I'm kinda forgetting, too, as to why and how we're here and what we're doing, 'cause it's been a process. I mean, I was on the planning board, I think, when that started, right, so.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, just, yeah, so, kinda tell, 'cause some of the folks are little new people in the audience, and nothing like throwing your curve, right?
Well, just sort of recent history, if you recall, a few months ago, Essex National Heritage Commission requested that you all appoint somebody from the town to represent the town in a signage program that's being developed for the Essex Coastal Scenic Byway, and the byway itself has been, it's kind of in the works for, what, over a decade? And it goes from Lynn up through Salisbury, and we developed, all the communities worked a few years ago to develop a, a corridor management plan, and out of that plan, one of the recommendations was to develop a signage system. And so Bill has been working on the signage system, he and I took a drive through Newbury to look at the recommended locations, they have a consultant who's working with them, who's identified some locations for the signs, we have a couple of tricky areas which Bill will go into, and I'll leave it at that, he'll, Bill will give you a bit of a, an overview of the byway and then kind of the current status.
Thank you, Martha. Any questions? I think she pretty much covered it all, so.
Can't take down our old eight thousand a bay signs. Go ahead.
Good evening. I'm happy to be here, thank you for the invitation, the opportunity to share the good news about the Essex Coastal Scenic Byway. The Scenic Byway Initiative is an initiative of the Essex National Heritage Commission and is consistent with our mission to preserve, promote, and enhance the historic, cultural, and natural resources of the Essex National Heritage Area, otherwise known as Essex County. I'm Bill Steelman, I'm the Chief Operating Officer of Essex Heritage. We're an eighteen-year-old regional nonprofit organization that was created by the U.S. Congress to manage the Essex National Heritage Area, again, the thirty-four cities and towns that make up Essex County. Our nonprofit organization is based in Salem. We work voluntarily with municipalities, nonprofit organizations, and local businesses to improve the quality of life and the economic vitality of our region. We have no regulatory powers whatsoever, and that's a point that I'd like to make about the Scenic Byway project as well. You may, we're the brown sign people, you may have seen some of the large brown signs out on the interstate welcoming you to the Essex National Heritage Area. We're also the organizers of Trails and Sales Weekends, these are two, two, the last two weekends of September, about a hundred and fifty free events, and again, a great opportunity for residents and visitors to connect. It's a real theme of ours, to connect with the local history, destinations, places, some of the natural and historical, cultural sites here in Essex County. Again, that's really our MO as an organization, and it's a real theme for the Scenic Byway as well, is just bringing people together around ideas. We also have a partnership grant program. A couple, several years ago, actually, we gave a grant to the town to help restore the roof and paint the schoolhouse that's on the lower green. Going back a decade or so, we've been instrumental as an organization in helping found the Coastal Trails Coalition, which hopefully, as you know, has been working in, along with Newbury, Amesbury, and Salisbury to develop a thirty-mile network of off-road, off and on-road trails, many, several miles of which are now open for us. We've also been instrumental in, 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 in working with eight communities, including Newbury, as part of the Border to Boston Trail effort. We were, had, had a role in sourcing the federal funds that are currently being used to design the trail as well. The Scenic Byway is another excellent example of that notion of bringing people together around, around ideas, in this case, cultural tourism, again, and this is an economic development issue. So what is a scenic byway? By definition, a scenic byway is a specially designated roadway that travels through an area of historic, natural, and cultural beauty. Our own Essex Coastal Scenic Byway is actually one of fifteen byways that are here in Massachusetts, and one of approximately fifteen hundred in the country. So I want to assure you that we're implementing a viable and proven concept. So here's the Essex Coastal Scenic Byway, again, it's approximately ninety miles long. It begins to, to our north in Salisbury, right on Salisbury Beach, and then travels over the Gillis Bridge into Newbury Port, onto High Street, onto High Road, down to Rowley, up Switch, around Cape Anne, and terminates approximately ninety miles later in Lynn. You can see the fourteen communities that make up the byway. The, the principal form of this route, or the route itself, is really defined, as Martha was saying, a few years ago, actually, two thousand and three, two thousand and five, by state legislation, the champion of which was Senator Bruce Tar, and he continues to be a great supporter of the Scenic Byway Initiative. So this route is a state-designated route, and that, among other things, allowed us to apply for federal funds that, to help fund the corridor management plan that Martha referenced, and also the current signage project is funded in part by federal, federal Even though the Scenic Byway is really, just now really emerging onto the tourism landscape, it does have, as I've indicated, a number of supporters, including elected officials, planning agencies, and businesses in the fourteen community byway region. As a coalition, we understand that to be successful, the byway program needs to meet the needs of the byways' businesses, its historic, cultural, and natural sites, and the fourteen municipalities that host the byway. Essex Heritage is committed to working with all of you to create such a program. To that end, as Martha referenced, we did embark in two thousand and nine on a twenty-one month planning process that culminated in the creation of a master plan. We call it a corridor management plan, but it's about two hundred and eighty-five pages of a number of ideas, a way to help preserve and promote the, the byway, particularly as a tourism marketing tool. As Martha noted, she was the, served as the town's liaison to that process, as she is serving now with the Scenic, with the signage project. Jeff mentioned he was also on the local planning committee, as was Kathleen Pearson, Dan Streeter, Patsy Brown, and Bethany Groff. Again, it came up with, there were a number of recommendations, and the, the signage project was one of the top ones. Just want to briefly go through a couple other high-priority recommendations that we've already implemented, most of which, again, are all about marketing the Scenic Byway, which in simplest terms, we're, we wanna brand this route, use it as a marketing tool to bring people, visitors primarily, off the big highways and over to the coastal communities, so they can discover and experience all that we have here, and hopefully encourage them to leave some money behind and support the local economies as well. First and foremost, you know, we're, we've created a website, that's the URL, there's about three hundred and fifty different listings on there, it's a full profile, including a photograph and business name, address, hours of operation, link to their website. The number of businesses along the byway here in Newbury are listed there as well, including a couple of the restaurants, Tinnercroft, some other places, the Mass Audubon, the Wildlife Refuge, so forth and so on, are already up on that website for people to see. And we've also produced us a piece of, this is our primary piece of collateral, printed collateral material, is a rack card, I've given you a copy in front of it there. I'm just, I will note that the lower green schoolhouse is one of the images that's depicted on the rack card every year. This is our, coming up, I think, our fifth year, fourth year, that we'll be distributing twenty-five thousand, and the idea is to get these cards not to people here, but to get them to people outside of our region, meaning outside of Massachusetts, outside of New England, and use, use it, help entice them to, want to learn more about the, the byway and the coastal communities. It's a call, a call to action. We've also, the byway is featured in a number of visitor guides, such as the ones produced by the Newbury Port Chamber of Commerce, the North of Boston Convention and Visitor Bureau, folks on Cape Anne, Salem, so forth and so on. Again, again, targeting a tourist, a non-resident audience, trying to get them, entice them to come visit our wonderful region. By chance, a private writer named Joel Brown, who actually lives in neighboring Newbury Port, picked up, seized on the idea of creating a book, and a couple years ago, he produced a guide to the byway, which includes some of the sites here in Newbury, as well as Newbury Port, anyway, Refuge and whatnot. That's available for sale. And again, one of the top recommendations was for a series of directional signs, or rather, a system. That's what brings me here this evening, I'm here to ask for your approval for six signs that would be placed on public right-of-way within the footprint, the corporate footprint of the town of Newbury. within the footprint, the corporate footprint of the town of Newbury. Just briefly stated, this is a, that's a, this is a grant-funded project. We received a grant from the Federal Highway Administration and they're paying eighty percent of the cost. The Mass, State of Massachusetts, through the Department of Transportation, is picking up the other twenty percent. The concept here is to, these are directional signs. So, it's, the thought is to put signs in places where people need to make change in direction. And again, the idea is to keep people moving up and down the scenic byway. So, these signs are not pointing people to individual destinations like parking or parks, restaurants, hotels, anything like that. They're not interpretive signs. They're not, they're not going to tell you what you're looking at. They're purely directional signs, again, to keep people moving up and down the scenic byway. It's a system that would span the full length of the byway, ninety miles, signs going in both directions. When people do travel the byway in both directions, we need to provide direction, directional signs for both, for people traveling in those directions. You might know how we want to get into the specific sign locations. Is there anything else? What else I need to say about the signage program itself? We're, we're at a, I should say, it's a two-phase project. We're in the planning phase right now. The other thirteen communities are in the same situation or position that you guys are, which is you've been presented with a draft plan, with the locations, proposed locations of the signs identified on the maps. Those map, the numbers on the maps correspond to photographs that are on the other document so you can actually get a, see where the site, see where the sign will be situated. And there's a brief description whether, regarding what the, what direction the arrow will point in, and any other information that relates to that sign, such as if it's sharing a pole or it's going to be on a new pole. We hope to, we're on track and hope to conclude the planning phase by the end of June. At that point, we'll have, should have, hopefully, your support and that of the other thirteen communities will also, at that point, bid the project. It's actually a project of our organization, so we'll prepare a bid package and bid the project, and we'll get a second firm on board. That firm will fabricate and install the signs. That's how this, that's how signs work. We, if everything goes according to plan and we can maintain the schedule that we hope to maintain, it could be this fall when the first signs are planted. I'm not sure exactly where, where that would happen first. It's estimated that it would take about, the installation of the signs following their fabrication would take about two or three months. All that work, we've hired, as Martha said, we've hired an engineering firm to help us determine where the sign should go. Both the sign location work and especially the sign installation work all conforms to Massachusetts Department of Transportation standards and protocols, as well as others established by the Federal Highway Administration, both for materials and look and feel of the signs.
Couple of comments yet?
Yeah, please.
Okay. High Road, of course, State Road. I don't think we can come out and give you permission to put a sign on that. I think you have to go to the state DOT to do that. Am I correct on that?
Jurisdictions change from town to town, particularly in terms of, yes, I should say that these state, the signs will be owned by the state of Massachusetts.
This one here that says Water Street, that's down by Bummer's Rock, that's actually Newbury Port. That's not us.
Right. That's, I noted that.
All right. And this one in Newbury, I don't know where this is.
Which one?
The next to the last one. B-134?
In the, in our, in the, part of the citing rubric entailed, basically, we're placing that what we believe in consultation with the communities is the minimal number of signs. We share the concern with most people that we don't want to overdo it with the signs. So, again, the signs are located in, in locations where, where we feel they're needed in order to keep people on the scenic byway.
The B-134, Chuck, you're afraid that that says Water Street and it might not be like a mile and turnpike or something?
That's correct.
It might be in Newbury Port.
Yes, sir. Yes, exactly.
I mean, we can refine all that. I mean, and it sounds simplistic, Bill, and I'm sure you're working with a really good engineer that's going to, you know, do all the things that need to be done. I mean, it is, especially 1A, especially this year demonstrates that the wing plows and everything else, so, I mean, we really, these areas get some, Chuck, wing plow, wing plow check?
Yeah, yeah, I know.
You know, we really, they're either strong or tall.
Yeah. So, the engineering firm will know, they'll have the highway layout plans. They do have, have access to the highway layout pans, plans, and we need to make sure that the signs are on public property. But I think, if I understand your point, is that they should be pushed to as far off the road as is practical.
Well, you mean, they know what they're doing, but, you know, it's up to you to make sure in a simplistic fashion that the engineering firm isn't from North Carolina or something, you know, so.
They're not.
Maintenance and replacement was one of my questions, especially after a winter like this where I'm sure we're going to find a lot of signs on the ground.
Ready for motion?
With the mailboxes.
Yeah.
Ready for motion? Okay. Mr. Chairman, I move that we allow the signs to go up on the Newbury roads where applicable at the discretion of the Highway Surveyor.
Second?
Any discussion? Sounds good to me. All those in favor?
All right. Thank you very much.
Could I just clarify, is it one of the grants and is it the DOT?
It's, my organization applied to the Federal Highway Administration, which administers National Scenic Byway Grants. And we were actually awarded the grant in two thousand and eleven. It's taken us a little while to get to this point, but the...
I won't rush into these things.
Some people won't allow that to happen. And as is typical with this sort of grant, the federal funds constitute eighty percent of the overall cost and there's a required match. In this case, the state of Massachusetts has kindly agreed in writing to pick up the...
The other signs I'm seeing look pretty good. I like them.
I mean, Chuck's in favor.
Thank you, yeah.
It's funny, you know, I'm a sportsman. I love to go hunting. I get excited about it. If we mention roads, I see Chuck start to quiver over here.
I'll focus on Chuck, yeah, but, thank you. Martha will be in touch with the Highway Surveyor and assuming a blessing, we'll proceed.
She'll be more than helpful, I'm sure.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Bill. We have our liquor licenses coming up. The first one is a one-day liquor license. It's for the Byfield Community Art Center, and I see Heidi and Steve are here. It's Cat in the Cradle Coffee House, and there will be others of the same. This one's on Saturday, March fourteenth, two thousand and fifteen, from seven-thirty to ten-thirty PM. Is everything okay, Ellen?
Everything's in order.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Anything you got to say?
No, I didn't look it over too closely this time. Been busy.
Motion to approve.
Second?
Any discussion? All those in favor?
All right.
Okay. Next, one-day liquor license, Byfield Community Art Center. And anything you want to add, guys, you know, feel free. Concord Hill Auction, Saturday, March eighteenth, two thousand and fifteen, from three o'clock to eight.
Wednesday.
Excuse me.
Yeah.
Okay. That's all right. Wednesday, Wednesday, March fourteenth, from two thousand and fifteen to seven-thirty to ten-thirty PM.
No, three to eight.
I'm back up to the other one again.
Yeah.
Heidi, what is it?
Concord Hill Auction on Wednesday.
Come on up here and tell us, because it sounds like it's a pretty good deal.
That's great.
Three-thirty to eight PM, anyway, on Wednesday. We've surplus slotted that. So, state again when it is, Heidi.
The Concord Hill Auction, run by Peter Cacaludo. He's been having regular auctions at the Byfield Community Art Center for the last couple of years, and this year, he is adding beer and wine to those. And he comes in with an incredible assortment of antiques and various items. They have a preview that runs from three to six, and then the auction runs from generally six to eight-thirty or so. And the Byfield Community Art Center provides food and beverage for the people that are attending. So, we, we have sandwiches, we have chili, whatever, but this is, this is a really fun auctioneer. He's just a great event to watch, even if you're not into buying anything or doing the auction. It's just a lot of, you know, it's a good time in a small town.
Now, Heidi, was this, was this some of the, was this the same gentleman that used to be around during Byfield Days, or is this someone else?
This is someone else.
I'll tell you...
He's originally from Georgetown.
I mean, Byfield Days was incredibly...
He came once for...
I mean, everyone loved that. Remember, they, they headed out, you headed out back of the building and that was significant.
Yeah, that, that was Peter, yes.
This, this, this is a great event. This is good. So, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second?
All those in favor?
All right.
Thank you.
Can I share something about the, can I just take a minute?
You can do anything you want.
Thank you, sir. The, the Community Arts Center is really busy, you know. Right now, we've, we've got three plays in production rehearsal. We had a tough winter because we kept having those weekend storms, but we've been using our time wisely. We're getting ready for this summer's Music and Arts Festival. We had a really great time last year and, and two weeks ago, when the list of musicians was published on the internet, we had over twelve thousand hits coming into the Byfield Music and Arts Center. It's just like, very exciting for us to be doing this. And I spoke with, I'm meeting tomorrow with two instructors from Albion College in Michigan who want to create a similar community arts center, and their student group did all of the research and came up with the Byfield Community Arts Center. So, we are on their tour and they're going to be viewing our facility tomorrow and talking about what we do, so.
Cool.
We're just really excited about what's happening over there.
Don't blame you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Heidi.
Ellen, before he reads this one, is it on the Friday or on the Saturday, the last one?
The last one is, did I put it on Saturday?
Yeah, you said Saturday.
Why, you don't want us to do the same thing all over again, huh?
Just try and fix it before we get there.
All right, here we go.
Thank you, Damon.
We'll, we'll get through it. One-day liquor license, Byfield Community Art Center, local lounge, Friday, March twenty-seventh, two thousand and fifteen, from seven-thirty to ten-thirty PM. Motion, please.
Motion to approve.
Second?
Any discussion? All those in favor?
All right.
One-day liquor license, Protection Fire Company Number Two, birthday party for James Wallace, April fourth, two thousand and fifteen, from five to nine PM. Motion, please.
Motion to approve.
Second?
Any discussion? All those in favor?
All right.
One-day liquor license, Protection Fire Company Number Two, birthday party for Andy LeBlanc, April eighteenth, two thousand and fifteen, from six o'clock to ten o'clock PM. Motion?
Motion to approve.
Second?
Any discussion?
None.
All those in favor?
All right.
Finishes the liquor licenses. Request of Town Clerk Leslie Haley to set hours for the May twelfth, two thousand and fifteen election from eight AM to nine, from eight AM to eight PM. Is that all we need, Tracy? Just to make a motion and we're done?
Motion.
Second?
Any discussion? All those in favor?
All right.
I'll read these. We have below us the commercial clam permit applications for the two thousand and fifteen, two thousand and sixteen season, and they are as follows. If anyone has any concerns...
Yell "hold."
You can yell "hold" and we'll come back and discuss it. We'll probably vote the bunch and then come back and hold them. So, first name, we'll do the last name then. Adams, Barrett, Bu Palant, Bennett, Capitelli, Castine, Colby, Colby, Colby Junior, Colby, 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 Conley, Corkum, Davis Junior, Dobson, Dodge, Dodge, Elwell, Foley, Foley, Bernier, Frazier, ah, Hoishrad, Jammin', Jammin', Kelly, Kelly, LoJack, 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 three LoJacks, Marshall, Merrill, Moran, Nixon, 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 three Nixons, Nice, O'Brien, O'Brien, and O'Brien, three, Olson, Papoulous, Papoulous, two, Rukoe, Savage, Short, Short, Thistlewood, 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 Thurlow, Thurlow Junior, Zitzon, Welch, West, West, White, Wood, Wood, Maxon, it looks like two more on the bottom, Hall, Hall. Motion to accept.
Hearing no objections, Mr. Chairman. Motion to approve all.
Do I have a second?
Second?
Any discussion? All those in favor?
All right.
Um...
God, you made short order of that.
Shh, winging a prayer. This is a good letter, and I think I'd like to share it with the group. And I think we've probably read it because it was part of our packet, but not too often do we have incredible praise, and this is incredible praise for our employees, and this is certainly nice to see. And I'm going to read it the best I can. It's handwritten. "I am writing to tell you what an incredible job your animal control officer, Carol LaRocque, did on behalf of my sister, Leslie Carroll, of Pomaylen. While my sister was suddenly hospitalized and uncommunicative, Carroll fed and found good home for Leslie's two parrots, which gave us great comfort and great comfort to Leslie. And shortly before she died, Carroll managed to rescue the birds just as the snow fell from the first blizzard was coming down. She stayed in touch with my husband and me, who live in North Carolina, as we worried about the effects on the birds should there be a power outage. We were so relieved when she placed Jake and Missy with a local vet and a vet assistant. Great home." So, they were pleased and they actually sent a donation for the animal control officer, care of Newbury Town Administrator. So, that's, that's pretty significant, so. And I might not have stated that we're doing correspondence, so that was nice to hear. Next letter is a letter from, as we're starting to get now, and is from Michael, who is going for his Eagle Scout. He is a member of Troop Forty-Four, which is shot at the Newry Hills Club and the Yankee Clipper Council Northern Lights District. Michael's Court of Honor will be at the Byfield Community Arts Center. Good. Central State, Byfield, Mass. on Saturday, the twenty-eighth of March at three PM. And it looks like, this had been done once before, but it's really, they need, it needs to be done all the time and it's super important and it, when you get help like this, it's really good. "To become an Eagle Scout, Michael earned more than his required twenty-one merit badges and served his troop in a variety of leadership roles. He has, he also led a project of cleaning detention ponds of debris that had grown up and collected there since they were constructed. The ponds are in place to keep water runoff from the street and from contaminating surrounding ecosystems in Byfield and Newry Mass." So, they asked to have us send a letter like we have before, and Ellen has informed me that she's going to write a letter from, you know, and have me sign it and us guys sign it and, you know...
Excellent.
It'll be, I think it's a really nice thing, as I've always said before, and I'll say it again over and over, my sons' eagles, I was involved in scouting, and it's a journey that I can't recommend enough for, for fathers and scouts, so. Tracy, this was a second part of communication, I'm not sure you saw it in the letter. It was written by the treasurer of the Triton Regional School District. It is to our treasurer, Ms. Diane Doyle. And if I was reading that, and guys, if you read it, definitely let me know, but it is kind of what you spoke about, I believe.
It is.
You know, I mean, it has to move through the, I mean, we're not totally, we can't be succinct in the fact that we're getting what we're getting and know where we are. Totally, that's with the Triton School Budget.
Right.
So, that was a letter to let us know that?
That's just notification of the preliminary assessment, which obviously, Newbury share was to be determined because we didn't have the governor's budget proposal at the time.
All right. Next communication that came to myself as the chair of the Board of Selectmen, Dear Selectman Walker, his gentleman name, I'll cut it short if I can a little, but it's got some great points. This gentleman's name is Rick Green, and he's chairman of the Massachusetts Fiscal Alliance, and it's a non, a nonprofit organization that advocates for fiscal responsibility and government transparency in Massachusetts legislature. I'm sending this letter because of significant votes taken recently on Beacon Hill that impact your community. "The General Court revised the rules by which it will govern itself over the next two years, and both the Senate and the House amendments are offered to require their cities and towns be provided with a preliminary estimate of local aid for next year by March fifteenth." 15th." When do we usually get it, Tracy?
Depends.
Yeah, so, I mean, this would be significantly useful to, to people like yourself that are forecasting, envisioning for our budget, right? Thus making the budget, municipal budget process easier. The House version of this proposal was drafted by State Representative Angelo Amira in Bridgewater as amended, number five, H. 215, and it was defeated by 118 to 38, which is significant. The standard version was put forward by, obviously, our Senator Bruce Todd Gloucester as amended, and it failed by 29 to 7 margin in the Senate. So, you know, he's asking, as, he asked one other thing, and I'll read that first, and then we'll suggest for some conversation so that we understand what he's doing. All right, during the same debates, State Representative from Uxbridge suggested to the House a requirement that properly submitted locally approved homeroom petitions, which we have had the significant, you know, we've certainly been aware of this not working the way we'd like it to work it before with our, some of our homeroom petitions. Homeroom petitions be acted upon within 121 days in the Senate chamber. State Senator Vinnie DiMarco of Plymouth also tried to improve the process by extending the time for which approval of such petitions would remain valid. Regrettably, Senator DiMarco's amendment was rejected without vote, Representatives Curious' proposal lost by 117 to 37. To see how the lawmakers from your community came down on these issues and other roll calls, please visit, and you can look and see how our guys voted, so. I guess what we can see from this, and it's a communication for us all to understand, at least the legislature and the Senate has concerned people that come to them and ask them to facilitate, and certainly it seems that senators and legislators know that we at this local level need help sometimes in navigating their system, and everything is so time sensitive. Any comments from you guys or anything? So it's kind of nice to know that's, that's working. The next one is interesting. I'm a guy that has a lot to do with, obviously, the great marsh, and I'm very much an advocate of clean water, you know, because of fisheries and other things, but everything is complicated, so I think as we, I will read a little bit and think beyond sometimes the envelope, because I'm not so sure that, it's not always the bigger guys that seem to skate, but it's also some little guys, and, I mean, I'm, I'm, we're talking about, sorry, we're talking about, my name is Sam Shepard, I'm a campaign organizer for Environmental Massachusetts, working on our clean water campaign. I'll cut right to the chase. "We're looking for local officials from across Massachusetts to sign into a coalition letter encouraging our federal congressional delegation to continue actively supporting the protection of full restoration of the Clean Water Act, and lobbying their colleagues in Congress to opposing attempts to reinsert damaging loopholes." I mean, that sounds so good at first breath, I, I don't know if I understand all the implications of that. "We've known from personal experience that here in Mass. how important the Clean Water Act is. It has been for protecting critical waterways, the Boston Harbor, Charles River, and often held up nationally as prime success stories on how clean water has become one of the most effective laws for protecting public health. Right now, the EPA is considering moving forward with a role to close loopholes in the Clean Water Act and restore it back to what it's been 15 years ago and since its creation before that. The loopholes forced by a controversial Supreme Court decision have made water safety protection more costly inefficient while calling into question the protections 50% of Massachusetts streams and 2 million miles of vulnerable streams across the country. Besides being fish, swimming, and general recreation areas for our family, these streams feed into drinking water sources of nearly 5 million Massachusetts residents. This is a big priority for Mass., for environmental Massachusetts. This simply common sense step would be the biggest victory for clean water in more than a decade. If you might guess, the polluters who forced these loopholes in the first place have gotten their allies in Congress to attack the proposal at every turn. This fall, they passed a bill in the Senate House to strip EPA's authority to make the rule, and similar attacks have come up across the Senate in coming weeks. Fortunately, Senators Warren and Markey have come out publicly in support of protecting the Clean Water Act, but throughout the Senate and House members have gotten a lot of press and from opponents. We are going to get these protections over the finish line to protect our public health and local economists that rely on clean water. Will need as much support as we can from our congressional delegates. If they feel strongly to weigh on the issue and rally our members to cause, we may be able to convince Congress to keep it in the hands off the Clean Water Act." Steve, how much do you know about the Clean Water Act? I mean, kind of where I am?
It's what we see in the.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, I am absolutely, you know, a proponent of clean water, and I don't understand why it becomes controversial, I don't understand why there are loopholes, and yet I see things that I never understood, like tremendous pressures on some small people to do things, when some of, without mentioning anything, but some of our larger municipalities, especially during storms and discharge over an inch of stormwater, I mean, it just goes out the biggest pipe. So I, I don't know where we're going with this, and it would be nice, maybe, maybe we can ask, I mean, I, certainly, our vote, if you choose to do it tonight, is certainly a move in the right direction, but I mean, it might be nice to have someone come and, and give us more information, maybe Bruce would, I mean, I don't, I still, I don't, I'm not fully understanding the whole implication.
Should we have a motion and then discuss it, or?
Oh yeah, make a motion.
Motion to sign on to the letter?
Yep. Do we have a second? I mean, I certainly, we could certainly sign on to the letter, guys, it's just, I would like to know more about the real dynamics of it.
Before I vote to go on stuff, I'd really like to research it.
Yep.
I, I really would, I don't want to.
Yeah, I understand that, I, I had the same feeling, so today I asked Ellen to do a little research for me, because I had, didn't have the time, so she pulled up something on the loopholes, which she printed up for me.
Yep. Did you get a chance to read them?
I read just the cursory and then the title of all of them.
Should we get a bunch of the copies for all of us, and maybe take them home, or do you want to?
I, I don't see that there's a deadline on this one, so.
And like, and like I said, I, I wouldn't like to make it sound like we're not in favor of clean water. It's just.
It's good to know more.
I, I don't like it when I don't know enough.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
So, so anyway, I mean, Ellen, thanks for that, and thanks for that, Damon, and maybe if we can all get a copy of that, and, and like I said, I mean.
I'd love to read it.
I mean, it probably wouldn't hurt to sign on to the clean water thing that, you know, obviously the Senator Warren and Markey are pushing, but maybe we should try to learn a little more. Anyway, what do you want to do, guys? Was there a second on their vote, or the discussion ended, and we're going to table it for another time? Where do you want to go?
Sounds like people want to table it till they have more information.
Hold on, go ahead.
I wanted to ask something about the Clean Water Act, I mean, honestly.
Come on up, so people can hear you.
Okay.
My name's Matt, I live on Nob Hill, but I'm, I'm here with my friend Donnie, I'm wondering if the Clean Water Act, you know, it's a good thing to have clean water, it's just, you know, you've got to be worried about government overreach, you know, what is the implications it's going to have for, you know, fisheries and, you know, clammy and all that stuff, so, I think it does need to be researched.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Stated better than I could. That was a good job. So anyway, maybe, I mean, we have Park River Clean Water, I mean, maybe talk to Marlene and some of the guys, and we can certainly come and listen, so. All right, so why don't we make a motion to revisit that?
Motion to table.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, but let's make it, can we make it, can we make it a motion to also have someone ask Park River Clean Water to come and maybe talk more in depth about what it really is?
I can do that.
Good. So, all right.
All in favor?
All, yep, excuse me, any, any discussion? All those in favor?
We need to rephrase.
Did J.R. second it?
No. Did we amend it? Should we amend it? You want to go back and do it, right?
Yeah.
Chuck made a motion.
Yep.
Let's make a motion to amend it, that J.R., go ahead.
Okay, motion for J.R. to bring us the literature to read for the next meeting.
And maybe ask if anyone from Park River Clean Water has a broader understanding of the issues to come to us.
Sounds good.
And I think it'll be good. I think it's going to be good. This gentleman articulated quite well what probably all of us were thinking.
Yep.
We're on television, it might be really good for this discussion to become a little more intelligent and broaden all of the information levels that could be, you know, you know, around this, and we certainly have some people that are looking at it from a lot of different angles, which is Park River Clean Water, so we'll get them to come and talk to us. So, that being said, any more discussion?
None.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Minutes.
I guess we were all here, weren't we, on the minutes?
Yep. Motion to approve as written.
Do I have a second? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
We need an approval for our friends, the warrants. Can I have a motion?
Yeah, motion to approve the warrants.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Meeting updates, has anyone been to a meeting?
Just the Municipal Building Committee, and they're continuing with their site search.
Are you going to be able to go to tomorrow's meeting? I'm not able.
Now, let's discuss this in a second.
Okay.
All right, because, well, let's discuss it now, I'll take it back. Which meeting?
The Municipal Building Committee's meeting tomorrow night, I'm not able to make that.
And do we have a school committee meeting too, tomorrow night? I think we do.
We've got the calendar.
Ellen, do we have one, do you know? School committee tomorrow night?
It would be on the calendar that I just gave you.
I don't see it there.
Then maybe it's, uh.
Leslie, just at 9:00 AM.
Well, anyway.
7:00 PM.
I'll check that and get back to you.
Yeah. We do have a meeting, it's what, with the fire department here in town all tomorrow?
The fire company.
Company.
What time is that one?
7:00 PM.
You can't make it tomorrow?
No.
I'll be at that one. Someone, if there was a school committee, should go to that, so.
There is a school committee coming up on Wednesday, we just got an email about it.
Yeah, well, you know what? Why don't we try to make?
I can make tomorrow night for the municipal.
I think it's an important thing that someone from our board be at the school committee meeting, if I have to, I'll go to that, I would certainly rather be at the meeting here tomorrow, maybe I can make it to, I'll come to this meeting first, and I'll go to the school committee meeting, all right? Because I probably should be at the school committee meeting too.
You think so?
All right, we'll cross that bridge and we come to it.
Are the school committee meetings on our calendar?
We, we get, and we get them.
I will add those, I thought Leslie put them on that town website, I think it's off the.
You know what it is, Ellen, I think I saw it on my computer, and.
I will do that and update you through email.
Great.
I know everyone, especially you folks that are involved with the Municipal Building Committee, anyway, want to be here, you can't be here tomorrow, so Chuck will be here.
Yep.
I will come to this meeting for the, for the kickoff of some of the conversation, and then I'll run over to Triton.
If we're going to have a quorum of selectmen, that's not posted.
Oh, okay.
Good night.
Well.
I would like, I would like to attend Municipal Building Committee, because I've been, everything I've been catching up with so far has been on paper, so it'd be nice to get some live input, if that works for everybody.
Well, are we going to be asked for discussion of decisions? I will come to, I will come to the.
They asked for the chairman, I know specifically, but it's, it's up, as long as you don't deliberate, it's probably fine.
Yeah, there is a school committee, March 11th, which is tomorrow.
I can sit out if it makes things logistically easier and catch up in other ways.
You should go, do, will you go to the school committee meeting?
Where is it?
It's over Triton, in the library, and, and I'll join you if, if I'm not needed here.
Okay.
All right, so, because you're on the committee, right?
Also at 7:00, correct?
Yeah, he's on, yep.
All right, and, you know, you're just going to more than observe than anything.
Right.
Take some notes, all right, and, and make sure people know that I could not be there on time, right?
Do you have the warrants?
One does.
I'm sorry?
Warrants.
All right, just before we start into that, I would like to say something that is kind of important for our region. Bruce Carlisle from Coastal Zone Management, the Coastal Erosion Task Force that was initiated quite a while ago by Bruce Tom, we had Doug, and we had Ronnie Barrett as representatives on it, it was a coastal commission that was a charge of the legislature to put together broad aspects and information, and without having it right in front of me, I believe the mission of the charge was to help municipalities and local homeowners be able to understand and move forward with the coastal concerns of erosion without doing damage to the environment, and that's about how the mission or charge was written. They spent quite a while, how many months, Tracy?
Many.
Huh?
I don't know when they first got started.
Quite a few months. And then they put together, without being quoted, and Jen, you probably know this from Dyke's report, Dyke did a good job in the paper last night, I think they have four information meetings and comment meetings, and asked for written comment afterwards. The newspaper did a good job on it, it was held at Ipswich in the Selectman's Office, and there was quite a few comments, there was a lot to do with the public doctrine and concerns about, you know, areas of concern such as, you know, our oceans and things, and it was also, just as, just as, you know, vibrant and poignant, the concerns of people that happen to live in these areas. Wayne Capalupo from Salisbury spoke very eloquently on, he's got a couple of hanging pilings that are integral to some of his seacoast properties surviving, and he's having trouble getting permission to just reinstall them into the sand, so, and Pacific Legal Foundation came with Bob Connors from the island, and Pacific Legal Foundation, of course, is very much steeped in constitutional and personal property law, so I, I have to say that Bruce Carlisle from Coastal Zone Management did a very good job on presenting all the information and fielding all the extremes and people in the middle that had a comment, and for myself that's integrated into town politics, that has to stand tall for my folks that live in town, and also a person that's very concerned as a conservationist for the environment, I think we're very lucky to have Bruce Carlisle in Coastal Zone Management, because he, he has a, a great understanding for the issues, and has done a really good job as lead person in this task force, as did all the other people that have worked hard to put some of the information forward, so I did want to let people know that we did have that meeting. Now, we have no executive session, and we probably could entertain a motion to.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Is that a second? On the way by, Chuck?
Yep.
Yep, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.